Okay, we'd ask people to please take their seats so we can get started. The clock on my right shows that we have about 30 seconds.
I hereby call this regular meeting of the City of Bloomington City Council to order and ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before we move to the roll call, I want to mention something that was mentioned earlier, an announcement that was made earlier today that the park issue, Eagleview, on the agenda for this evening, the city manager has decided to pull that from discussion for now. Now, this is not an indication of what's going to happen permanently. It merely represents the fact that some council members felt like they wanted to have a further discussion of the city's overall budget before we made an individual decision on the park. And we are having a city budget work session this Saturday starting at 8:00 a.m. David, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. This topic will be incorporated in our Saturday budget work session as we talk about the entire city budget. And specifically, this park will be, you know, on the agenda for continued discussion even, you know, for as much time as necessary.
But it also would come back at some point to the city council in all likelihood.
Yes, uh-huh.
Just a matter of getting some more discussion time in.
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. So if you're here for that, you're welcome to stay to see the council meeting, but I wanted to make sure that you understood that upfront. Let's go ahead and take the roll call.
Alderman Freud.
Here.
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Milamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Purcell.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Mayor Stockton.
Here.
Okay, I'm not aware of any recognition or appointments for this evening. So we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains items that were placed there by staff in the belief that each item is not, it's not necessary to have separate discussion or votes on those particular items. However, we know that sometimes citizens or council members want to have some discussion or want to take an item and have a separate vote. Therefore, any single member of the council can pull an item either at their own volition or at the request of a citizen. So I would ask at this time, are there any items on the consent agenda this evening that individuals would like to pull for separate discussion and vote? Judy.
6C.
Okay, consider it pulled. Anything else? Okay, seen nothing else.
Mayor, could I just, I just want to make sure the council acknowledges the fact that there is that new item L.
Yes.
So when they make the motion, it would be A through L excluding C.
Correct. And just, I assume everyone has a copy of the Addendum 1 that indicated that. That's a easement request, wasn't it? Okay, seen no requests. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I move we pass the consent agenda A through L except for C.
Thank you. Seconded. Moved and seconded. The motion is to pass the consent agenda absent item C. In other words, A through L minus C. A yes vote agrees with that. We'll go ahead and take a roll call vote on that.
Alderman Freud.
For both the consent and regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items, and I vote yes.
Alderman Mathie.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Milamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Hi.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda A through L minus C has passed. We now move to the regular agenda for this evening. The first item being the former item, pardon me, former item 6C, which is a five-year lease agreement for multifunctional devices, which are the all-in-one printer, fax, copy machines that are, many of you probably even have in your home. And this is in the amount of $480,839.40 for 32 items over five years. Judy, you pulled that. Would you like to make a statement as to why you pulled it, and then we'll turn it over to our city manager?
Okay. Well, I asked a number of questions, which I appreciate the answers to, but frankly, I still have some, I really have some concerns about this. It's 400, almost $451,000. You know, obviously, half a million, a lot of money to me, and I don't know about anyone else, but it strikes me, let me see if I just have a few real basic facts straight. We are going to be leasing 32 of these machines. Is that correct?
Yes.
Four or five, each one for five years?
Yes.
Okay. And is 32 the number that we actually have in the city? I mean, do we need 32? We have 32 now, we're going to get 32 new ones, is that it?
Yes, there are 32 MFDs, multifunctional devices now that are being replaced. They, above those 32, with the, some analysis, we were taking another 19 laser printers and fax, you know, type devices out of service.
Okay, and a couple more real quick things. I asked this question, but let me see if I really understand. What is the purchase price of an individual machine? The purchase, just to buy one of these MFDs is how much? I'm sorry, I asked the question, but I'm not sure I quite understand the...
Yeah, they do vary, and I'm sorry, I don't have, you know, an actual number in front, but the, all 32, if we were to purchase all 32 of them at once up front, that, that's the, on the spreadsheet that was in the packet, that's the $162,000. So they're, you know, they're, some of, they vary. There are some that are, you know, $700, $1,000. There are some that are $6,000 or $7,000 or, you know, more, depending upon what they are. There are a lot of different models that we have out of those 32 items.
So they're different, each one is different?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, you can see there, again, Alderman Sterns, on this, on the spreadsheet that was included, there are model numbers, so there are certain numbers of each model.
Right, okay. And I just paused, really paused at this half-a-million-dollar lease, mostly because, you know, I mean, I'm certainly not in every department, but it seems like a lot, 32. How many departments do we have, David? 14? I don't know. Okay.
Nine or two.
It seems like a lot, and even more than that, and this is just my impression, it seems like kind of a shotgun approach. I'm sure we have MFDs in the city that are working fine, I'm sure we do. We have some that are, you know, you mentioned seven, eight-years-old that probably aren't working fine and do need to be replaced. But this just strikes me as a Cadillac approach. Will this approach work? No question about it. It will work, and in five years, I guess, we'll be ante up another half a million, whatever. And I get, or more, you know, and I get the whole concept that we'll be able to upgrade our equipment. I mean, I totally understand all that and appreciate it, but it just strikes me that 32 machines, wow, you know, there ought to be some that are working fine. And also, another concern I had was, you know, are we truly, truly individualizing this and tailoring this to the exact need of the exact situation? Or are we taking an easy approach? And, you know, please don't misunderstand me, but it strikes me as kind of a Cadillac, you know, easy, let's just do this and not worry about the individual machines that might still be working, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it struck me, there must be, and I can't help but wondering, you know, in my own business or in other business, if a cheaper way, you know, a more tailored, a fine-tuned way wouldn't be found. So frankly, I was really looking a little concerned about the half-a-million dollars for just leased equipment that obviously won't belong to the city either. So anyway, that's my feeling, and I appreciate your answers, really. I don't think there's a lot more that can be said because it's such a, it's such a large issue, you know, these, all these machines throughout the city. But the concept of leasing is not a concept that I think always makes the most sense. So, thank you.
Mayor, let me just add a few comments, and I think, one, this isn't a Cadillac approach. This is equipment that we have looked for, first and foremost, equipment that will be reliable to staff. I could name numerous times in a month, throughout the city, our older equipment has broken down. We're constantly having people come back, and it is affecting the productivity of not only the staff, but it's affecting our ability to provide great customer service because our employees do not have the tools they can rely on. And as we all know, we did get behind in making the investments for the equipment. And whether it's a $150,000 dump truck, or it's a $2 or $3 million, you know, software system, copying machines, just like many other tools, are there to help ensure that our employees are productive, they can be efficient, and we can rely on them to provide good-quality services in a cost-efficient manner. So I do want to, and I think even the record shows, you know, and I know Scott and his staff, they're constantly looking for ways we can cut back. We're continuing to try and consolidate, having more and more people utilize single machines, but first and foremost, the city is spread out. We have many outlying areas which don't allow for greater utilization, which could come if we were to consolidate more of our operations into just a couple of buildings. So I really applaud staff by taking a very thorough approach to ensuring that we're, you know, we're reducing machines, as this is indicated, and we're trying to get machines that don't cost any more than what we need to have reliable, productive machines. And unfortunately, because of the high demand we put on machines of this nature, they are prone to break. Hence, it's so critical to have kind of maintenance agreements and have the ability for people to come in and service them. So I applaud Scott and his staff for this recommendation, and I would recommend that the council approve this lease agreement as provided in the staff backup report.
Okay, before we have any other discussion, I'd like to get a motion on the floor. Rob?
I move that we approve the recommendation by staff for the lease of this 32 machines.
Karen?
I'll second it, and I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead with your question and...
I think there's a clarification that needs to be made. The way that I read this, this is not simply for the machine, this is for all the consumables. This is the paper and the click charges and everything else that you have costed out over the same five-year period at almost $424,000, right?
Yes, it is.
Actually, everything they gave us said that the lease was slightly more expensive. In fact, $27,203 more expensive. And my analysis, it's cheaper. As a banker, I figured out if we had to pay 4% to borrow the money or pay 4% to use the money, that would be over five years, $84,721, so we'd be ahead, somewhere close to $50,000 by doing lease. And that doesn't even count what Karen just brought up, that we get all the cost of maintenance and supplies. Obsolescence is better handled than a lease option because if something goes wrong with that machine or we want to upgrade, we can. We don't have to sell it or dump it.
Right.
And it's basically an insurance policy if a machine becomes inoperative. So this is a less expensive option, and it is less expensive going forward rather than making a purchase. So I like the idea, and I like saving money, so I certainly support this.
And let's also add to that, service. We've all heard jokes about the copier machinery repairman always being there. And they are complicated devices with the coagulation and duplexing features on them. Jamie?
Scott, I was just going to add that I've read numerous studies over the years for an organization our size, consolidating copier functions under a single vendor will absolutely lower prices across the board. And it's for a lot of the reasons that we, we've already talked about. If anything, I was just going to add that I was jealous of some of the per-click prices that the city was getting because that's a lot cheaper than we're seeing in some of our private industries as well. So, well done negotiating this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Judy?
How many machines are we discarding or recycling, roughly? Are we giving rid of?
So there are, we're replacing 32 existing MFDs, and we feel like our target is another 19 machines that we'll be able to pull out of use because of the multifunctional use of these machines. It's also important to know, I'm not sure if I made it clear, we have more than 32 MFDs within the city. We're not replacing every one of them all at once. There are, you know, newer ones that are out there that aren't being replaced. The ones that we're targeting, these 32, are at a minimum five-years-old, and most of them are seven-years-old, and they are, they are failing, you know. In fact, we're getting comments from the, our support organization that they're, some of the parts are being, you know, are difficult to find at this, at this stage. So seven years out of a machine like this really is a pretty good effort for the box.
Will the other 19 be leased too?
No, no, they're going away. We're doing away. We think we can eliminate 19 devices, you know, whether it's a laser printer or mostly, you know, other black-and-white laser printers that we have, you know, in different areas, and color laser printers, but some fax machines, no scanners involved in that, just laser printers and other fax machines that are, you know, now sitting there on desks, you know.
Okay, well, that's information I didn't have, you know, here, so, thank you.
Okay, seen no other requests to speak. We're going to go ahead and vote on this. The motion is to approve the five-year lease agreement as stated, and a yes vote will support that motion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Freud.
Yes.
Alderman Mathie.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Milamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
No.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Motion carries. We now move to item 7A on our regular agenda, and this is a discussion of a, a public hearing and a discussion of the community development block grant proposal for the 2013-14 year. At this time, I would like to start the public hearing and would hereby declare it open. And to start, David, you want to just provide a little bit of background information for anybody that might wish to speak?
Yes, I'd like to have Sharon Walker come up. Sharon is our CDBG administrator. The council might, let me just make this, this particular action plan or budget for the upcoming CDBG year is something we discussed with the council earlier this fiscal year in an attempt to help give you an early opportunity to give input on the various projects that we're proposing the fund. We have included both the original plan as well as the revision based on our earlier discussion with the council, and I'd like to turn to Sharon Walker to just kind of go through and mention some of the highlights of what is in this CDBG budget that has been modified based on input from the city council. Ms. Walker?
Thank you, David. Good evening. Seems like it's been a quick one-year turnaround since I've been up here last and reviewing different projects and activities. Just a few of the highlights, and I'd like to point out, especially for our audience that picked up any of the information tonight, I think some of the public notices included an incorrect address in your packets. The property address for the Labyrinth project now is no longer 604 West Washington, it is proposed to be at 502 Oak Street. So I want to make sure to clarify that in your packets. I think council has correct information, however, in front of them. When I was last here in October to talk about a proposed budget, we had a little bit different take. Originally, I was proposing $150,000 for the Labyrinth project, and with your encouragement and suggestion, we continued to research some other options. For that, Labyrinth has worked tirelessly with looking at existing properties that you suggested, Judy, and we're able to find one at 502 North Oak that may fit perfectly with their transitional housing program that they've proposed. So, in doing so, we could reduce the amount for the Labyrinth project from the originally proposed $150,000 back in October down to the $75,000. And the $75,000 will go for rehabbing the six units that are currently in that building. So that meant we have $75,000 to reallocate, and the highlighted areas for the revised January activities indicate the areas that have been increased from the additional $75,000 availability. You'll note that the rehab loans was increased from $160,008.07 to $190,807. Demolition was increased from $100,000 to $125,000. We increased our admin line item from 15 to 25. Just to note on that, we are required by HUD to prepare a consolidated plan every five years. It is from this plan that we budget all of our projects and activities, and it is due in 2015. We typically start working on that about a year and a half out. We have contracted with the United Way Organization. You may have heard a recent press release on the community assessment of needs that's going to be provided, not only for the city of Bloomington and town and normal, but for local agencies as well. So that's, that's what that increase in $10,000 in admin is for. We also increased the Boys and Girls Club renovations from $10,000 to $20,000. That was based on a walkthrough of the facility. We had originally just gotten a written proposal from Nick Sanchez, the executive director there, and after taking a look at the facility, saw some of the dire needs that were needed there, and that $10,000 wasn't going to even scratch the surface. We are proposing to work out a match program with the Bloomington Housing Authority to also contribute towards that project. That brings us down to the Labyrinth, which had the revision from the $150,000 down to $75,000, and we were able to plug in $50,000 for sidewalk renovations in the low-to-moderate income targeted areas again this year. I know that was another request that council had made back in October. So that's some of the highlighted differences between October and now. Be glad to entertain any questions that you may have on the specific line items. We also have with us tonight, I believe, Nick Sanchez from Boys and Girls Club, maybe a couple of their board members. We have members from Labyrinth, and we also have members from WBRP organization in attendance, so I'm sure they'd be able to answer any detailed questions you may have as well.
Okay, remember, this is a public hearing. We'll have an opportunity to discuss this later. I would suggest that we go ahead and see if any members of the public would like to speak on this, ask questions at this time. How many people would like to speak at the public hearing this evening? If you'd, let's see, just two hands? Alton, Dennis? Okay, that being the case, we'll go ahead and invite, one of you want to volunteer to come up first? Dennis? And we're going, we'll give you, will three minutes be sufficient?
More than enough.
Okay.
Dennis Arnold, 504 North Lee, Bloomington. What I wanted to speak about was Labyrinth, and that is, 502 North Oak is an interesting location choice for Labyrinth's parolee housing. It's a beautiful, well-built apartment building that formerly housed retired nuns several decades ago. It has not, a lot of decay since, but it is still worthwhile rehabilitating.
in 2015. We typically start working on that about a year and a half out. We have contracted with the United Way Organization. You may have heard a, a recent press release on the community assessment of needs that's going to be provided, not only for the city of Bloomington and town in Normal, but for local agencies as well. So, that's, that's what that increase in ten thousand in admin is for. We also increased the Boys and Girls Club renovations from ten to twenty thousand. That was based on a walkthrough of the facility. We had originally just gotten a written proposal from Nick Sanchez, the executive director there, and after taking a look at the facility, saw some of the dire needs that were needed there and that ten thousand wasn't gonna even scratch the surface. We are proposing to work out a match program with the Bloomington Housing Authority to also contribute towards that project. That brings us down to the Labyrinth, which had the revision from the one hundred and fifty thousand down to seventy-five, and we were able to plug in fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk renovations in the low to moderate income targeted areas again this year. I know that was another request that council had made back in October. So, that's some of the highlighted differences between October and now. Be glad to entertain any questions that you may have on the specific line items. We also have with us tonight, I believe, Nick Sanchez from Boys and Girls Club, maybe a couple of their board members. We have members from Labyrinth, and we also have members from WBRP organization in attendance, so I'm sure they'd be able to answer any detailed questions you may have as well.
Okay, remember, this is a public hearing. We'll have a opportunity to discuss this later. I would suggest that we go ahead and see if any members of the public would like to speak on this, ask questions at this time. How many people would like to speak at the public hearing this evening? If you'd, let's see, just two hands? Alton, Dennis? Okay, that being the case, we'll go ahead and invite, one of you wanna volunteer to come up first? Dennis? And we're going, we'll give you, will three minutes be sufficient?
More than enough.
Okay.
Dennis Arnold, five oh four North Lee, Bloomington. What I wanted to speak about was Labyrinth, and that is, five oh two North Oak is an interesting location choice for Labyrinth's parolee housing. It's a beautiful, well-built apartment building that formerly housed retired nuns several decades ago. It has not, a lot of decay since, but it is still worthwhile rehabilitating. What I find very interesting about this choice is it's across from a bar which, in the past, contributed to Kaleidoscope's Market Street Group home failure. At that intersection of Oak and Market, the in-your-face prostitution of two thousand nine through two thousand eleven has been softened and today moved north to six oh one North Oak Rooming Home. I've been asked many times over the years, what's wrong with the west, with west Bloomington and especially the near west side? My answer is social service organizations experiment. In addition, many of my neighbors are psychiatric outpatients, some under care and parental visitation. Far too many, far too many former patients are under no care at all, except our police department. So, I don't know what to think of the location for this type of housing, but it is an amazing proposal for a location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Alton, you know how this works?
My name is Allison Franklin. I reside at five oh eight Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, and I wasn't aware of the information regarding the neighborhood. To me, it's kind of a moot point. As I spoke before on this issue, I am not insensitive to the needs of the individuals that would be receiving services here. I spent a number of years as a substance abuse counselor. In the course of that time, I became quite aware of the kind of life that those poor folks had to live. However, it's a matter of appropriateness from my perspective. To me, we are putting the needs of five people ahead of the needs of substantially more individuals that we can assist with the actual purpose of a community block development grant, which is those people who are living in a neighborhood, who could get put out in the street, those people who have a water heater that goes out in the middle of the winter or the furnace stops working, and I just can't, in all good conscience, endorse something, and quite frankly, I can't quietly give the, give that nod of silent assent without saying something. I believe that the citizens who are currently in need of the services that could be provided by those funds are far more appropriate to the purpose of our city and those funds that we receive for those purposes. It speaks to, in here, sustainable living environment and suitable living environment, and I don't see, maybe I'm just not nuanced enough to pick up what those areas are. If y'all could shed some light on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alton. Anyone else? Okay, we do have, Marty?
Marty Sagel, six fifteen East Chestnut in Bloomington. I have not followed this particular exercise that closely. I was very familiar with the kaleidoscope situation, and my neighborhood really suffered quite a bit from it. I would just like to point out here that we are in a time of a lot of social service experiments, and they do place a heavy burden on the neighborhood in which they, neighborhoods in which they are placed, and I would suggest that this project does draw moral distinctions between neighborhoods, and I think that's something you really wanna avoid.
Thank you. Is that it? Oh.
Mayor, council? My name's Nick Sanchez. I live at twenty-two fourteen Patriots Point. I'm the executive director here for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Bloomington Normal, coming up on my first year, and I just thought this would be an excellent time for me to go ahead and just introduce myself since I haven't met any or most of the council members. The Boys and Girls Club is up for a, in our terms, a very significant amount of money, and that money, a lot of people may be thinking, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Clubs. No, it's Boys and Girls Clubs. We're all the way on the west side, over on sixteen fifteen West Illinois Street, right next door to the sunny side project area there, and we're serving up to almost around seventy kids per day. We just got our numbers up to around sixty-five. That doesn't include our twenty, about twenty-five different teenagers that we're working with on Wednesday in, in cooperation with a couple of different organizations, but I just thought you should know that the organization is alive and doing very well over on the west side, and you are always welcome to stop by, in for a tour and take a look at what the facility is doing right now, how it's actually producing and, and putting together some really strong younger citizens for the city of Bloomington. So, if there's ever any questions or you ever need to speak anything about, or need to hear anything about the Boys and Girls Club, I would be more than happy to come and speak with you or even take you on a tour to meet with our board members and our club members, and I thank the city council for taking the opportunity to actually consider this amount for our organization. Thank you.
Nick, thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Mary Campbell, and I'm with Labyrinth Outreach Services to Women. I just wanted to clarify a few things if I can. Number one, working with women in the approach that Labyrinth has developed is not an experiment. It's been tested and tried in cities all around the country. It's found to save money. It's found to save city government money, county jails money, and the taxpayer money because it keeps the women from going back to prison. The, right now, to house a woman at the county jail is about twenty-two thousand dollars. To house a woman in a state facility for a year is about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars, and to care for that woman's children, and on average, they have two children in our foster care system, is about five thousand per child, and that doesn't cover any of the expenses beyond paying the foster mother. So, this isn't an experiment. It's been tried and tested. The research is profound on how to keep women from returning from prison, and we've explored all of those options. We've been to other facilities, and we've gathered the data, and we've worked with professionals on it. As to the reason why we picked six, five oh two North Oak, because there are many reasons. One is that we've been accepted and embraced by the West Side Neighborhood Association, and they have felt that by providing services to these women will improve the area because those women are in their neighborhood anyway. They're just there without supervision. They're there without any counselors. They're there without a support team. So, our program provides a counselor, a mental health counselor. It is not a kaleidoscope. I know kaleidoscope. I knew it well. These women have served their time. The ones who'll be staying there are not women who are waiting to go to jail. These are women returning from jail, and their goal is to get back into the community, to get a job, to go to Heartland Community College, to get a trade for the trades and labor, and to get their kids back out of foster care. So, that's the purpose of Labyrinth. That neighborhood, our goal is to embrace that neighborhood and to improve that neighborhood. My husband and I bought a house not very far from there ourselves that we're currently rehabbing because we believe in that neighborhood and we wanna see that neighborhood grow and improve. The, it is across the street from the bar. All the research tells us that it doesn't matter. If a person wants to get a drink, they'll go two feet or they'll go two hundred miles. It's important that they get the services that they need and that they feel safe and secure within their living environment. That's what's important. So, if you have any questions specific to Labyrinth, I'd be, if, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Mayor, but I'd be certainly willing to try to answer them.
Okay. Not this time, little Mary. Thank you.
You're welcome, and we really took what you told us last year very seriously, and that was the reason for seeking out an existing property that's really in kind of a, a rough area, and we felt that we could, for much fewer dollars, actually house more women. It's a facility that will accommodate five units and will have a space for an office for our social worker, and will have a visiting room and a family room and a kitchen area in that same space so that the women can meet with their kids and begin that process of reconnecting with them. So, we, we took your advice.
Seventy-five thousand, and you're doing the same process.
And we're working with private investor, and, and that's a, a partnership that we've developed.
Right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Judy?
I guess I had a question about the Labyrinth, if you, if you'd be so kind, and that would be what, what neighborhood meetings were held, and with which neighborhoods? I, I'm not, you know, there's various ones on the west side.
We met with the West Side Neighborhood Association. The, it's, it's the WB, West Side Neighborhood. WBRP, yes, we've met with that organization. We've met with people, we've spoken at the Harvest Family Center. Actually, we're speaking there again. That, that community has embraced us, actually provided fifteen hundred dollars to provide services for the women.
I'm thinking of the Gap neighborhood.
That's it.
Or, well, did they have a chance to meet with the Gap neighborhood or the Old Town?
Yes, it's the same, it's the same organization. We've been to their office and we've spoken with them and, and we've worked with them and we, we, before we even proceeded to consider a neighborhood, we went to the community, and then when we began to look for a already existing facility, our commitment was to stay with that same neighborhood because we had already been endorsed and accepted by them.
Was there a special use permit issued by the city or any, you know, zoning changes or anything like that?
No, it's currently a six-unit apartment building.
Okay, I just wondered it functioning as a group home or a?
No, no, it's, it's a six-unit right now, but that won't change.
So, for that, for a group home facility, they don't need a special use permit?
It's not a group home. These women will be in individual apartments.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, good point. No, that's, thank you. You're welcome.
David?
Ms. Campbell, a couple of questions.
Sure.
First of all, is it your impression or understanding that this is most likely a one-time contribution from the city, kind of seed money, if you will, to help, help start up the, the Labyrinth operation there?
The, yes, the, in terms of any kind of investment in the facility itself, yes, we've estimated the cost of rehabbing this building. It's structurally very sound, has a good roof, the brick is very good shape, but it's very tired inside, so we've estimated the cost it would take to restore each of the units, and we can do this along with a lot of volunteer help. We can do that for seventy-five thousand. We've been working with the Trades and Labor Council as well, and they actually on our advisory board now, so we hope to get a lot of volunteer work out of, out of those folks too.
One of the aspects we talked about, I, I think last time when we had this conversation was, and I guess I'm just looking for some validation, not looking for specifics, because this is certainly, you know, your operation, if you will, but you, you have a sense, you have a high confidence level that you have a, a business model in place, if you will, that allows you to operate and sustain the, the Labyrinth?
Yes, actually, we do, you all know this, but I'll just say it. In order to get money, you have to exist.
Right.
And so, and you have to have data that shows that, that you are making a difference, and there are, this, well, you all know about the problems that our county jail faces with overcrowding and the expenses that are incurred in that, trying to build on more, whatever. So, there are funds out there that are available, especially for women, because the women are a very fast-growing population in our prisons, and so, there are, there are grants, there are foundations that exist with monies that we can apply for, and our, our program will allow them to stay for up to two years in the house. We'll provide services indefinitely, but in the house, we've, the arrangement is that they can stay up to two years, which is based in research that says they need to have stability for at least eighteen months, otherwise the recidivism rate returns to, returning to prison within about the first three years, more than fifty percent do currently. So, and then there's other monies that are available because then that kicks it out of being a transitional house to be more considered permanent housing, so that opens up other avenues of funding.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
You're welcome, sir.
Rob?
If I remember right, it was about three hundred thousand last time?
Yeah. Now, is this part of the public hearing or is this, are we starting discussion?
Discussion, if you're done.
Okay, I need to, is anyone else wish, wish to? Yes, please approach the podium and state your name and address and adjust the microphone.
Switching topics back to the Boys and Girls Club, I'm Colleen Harold. I live at eleven oh five Broadway in Normal, and I'm on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, and Nick Sanchez is, is new and's done a great job, but I want to draw a picture for you of some of the issues in the building at one sixteen Illinois Street. I've been bringing, I work at Illinois State University in teacher education, and I've been bringing groups of ISU students to that building to tutor the kids for a good ten years now, and there's a room in the basement of the building that has serious issues with flooding, and so, we will bring our students to tutor, but we're never quite sure if the room's going to be available because it's flooded. A group of students, two and a half semesters ago, saw a need, wrote two grants, worked with the club to identify what would be the proper furniture for that room. They bought bookshelves on wheels so we could wheel the, a way out of the water. They bought plastic mats. They wanted to buy carpets so the kids could sit down and, and have a cozy place to read. Flooded, so I am so excited to see that you're addressing the issue of the building at one sixteen Illinois Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Once we had a few old people that involved in others.
I'll be short.
Sure.
Mayor, city council people, I would also just like to echo-
And we need, we need your-
Three five oh four Gabby Drive, and I'm the president of the local Boys and Girls Club, and I do echo Nick and Colleen's sentiment. I just wanna paint just a little bit clearer picture. We have four rooms at the Boys and Girls Club, and Nick talked about the number of kids that we have coming in, up to seventy per day. We have close to five hundred members of the Boys and Girls Club, and right now, we can only use three of the four rooms. So, we're at seventy-five percent capacity because the main room that Colleen just mentioned is the one that we really need the, the funding for. We've got a serious grading issue, and the water is sloping right towards the building and coming right into that room, and right now, we've had serious mold issues and just really need to take care of that room so we can get back up to capacity to serve the kids in the community, and that's really all I wanted to say is, is we're down twenty-five percent without this one room, so, any, any support would be appreciated. We do appreciate all you have done for us in the past, and thank you, Sharon, for bumping up the allocation, because we didn't think the initial ten thousand was gonna cover the project, but, but this would definitely help, so, thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you, John. Okay, last chance. Okay, I see no further public input, so I hereby declare the public hearing closed. That now brings us to council discussion on the issue, and Alderman Fazini?
Yes, Sharon, I just wanna make sure I got the numbers all right. We, we started a while back at three hundred thousand. We wanted the project to work, but we didn't wanna spend three hundred thousand dollars. I think that sort of summarizes it. At the time, I think I suggested that someone buy this and lease it to us, and we might have to pay twelve hundred dollars a month or some number like that, about fifteen thousand dollars a year for five years. Surprisingly, it comes out to seventy-five thousand dollars, which is the number you're asking for. I wanna make sure that Alderman Sage's answer is correct. This is the only seventy-five thousand dollars you'll be asking of the city council over this next five years.
For housing rehab or public-
For housing rehab or public facility improvements, correct. I have suggested that we perhaps look at twenty-five thousand dollars in the next one or two or three years for operating costs only, so it would be a public service activity while they search for grants and obtain funding for operations. But that's, you know, for future budget and future discussion.
So, the current budget isn't a balanced budget. There is deficit at this stage for operating.
And I guess I'd let Mary come back and answer that. She has prepared an operating budget and has identified already some avenues of donations and things that offset in funding. I don't know, sorry, Mary, if you want to address the budget specifically.
Thank you.
Well, you're asking the social worker to address a budget. I don't know about that. The private investor that we're working with is purchasing the property for us on our behalf. And at which point, in about a year and a half, when we're able to take over, actually, we'll take over initially with the mortgage payment, which is about four hundred and twenty-five dollars with our purchase price. And so, we'll be able to handle that because we have people currently in the property that are renters. So, as we begin to rehab the property, we won't do it all at one time. We won't move all of them out at one time. We'll gradually, because of course, it would be a lot easier on everybody if we just did like one or two units at a time in terms of the operation. So, we'll, the first, the first six months or so at least, we'll be having income from those people who are currently renting. And at that, during that time, that'll allow us to do more fundraisers, which we've already begun plans for several of them.
Okay. That'll work. At some point, do you hope to own the building?
We will own the building, yes, sir. The arrangement is with the private investor that as soon as we're ready to take it over, they will not only sell it back to us, but they will sell it back to us at the price that is currently owed on the mortgage. So, if, for example, we buy it at ninety-five thousand and over the course of the year, we're able to pay more than the four twenty on the mortgage payment, say we pay six hundred, that will be paying down on the principal. So, in a year, year and a half, when we're able to purchase it back, we will purchase it back at the reduced cost.
Okay, so the value of the property would be the ninety-five thousand plus some portion of the seventy-five thousand that you're putting into it?
The value of the property, but we won't be purchasing it for anything more than, less than ninety-five.
Right. But it'll be worth considerably more than that because you'll be fixing it up to the tune of about seventy-five thousand dollars.
That's correct. That's correct. It'll probably be worth significantly more.
That'll all be in the lease purchase arrangement.
Yes, it will. We have a lawyer working on that right now.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Karen?
Thanks. I just wanted to make a couple of comments in reaction to, I think, the idea that somehow this might not be an asset to the neighborhood. This neighborhood has had problems and I've only seen it get better and better. And it's gotten better because people have worked together to make it so. And I think any of us who live and work and hang around older neighborhoods know that our neighborhoods go up by one property or down by one property. And I see this as a property that's only going to go up. It's going to be stabilized. It's going to have a great deal of care given to it, both in its exterior and just physically, but also what's going on in there. And I don't think we're helping just five people. We're helping generations. We're helping families. And I think if we just tend to think about this as one person at a time, that's, it's not giving credence to what this project is really all about. And I also want to acknowledge the great care that Mary Campbell and the Labyrinth Board have put into reflecting on what they heard here from this council and all the efforts that they put into this to completely rethink this. And I think they've done a wonderful job with it. I'm very supportive of it and I'm supportive of the budget that Sharon's put together. You did a great job here. I appreciate all the work you put into it. So, thank you.
Yeah, the council was not supportive previously and made suggestions, and I think most of those have been adopted, so. David?
Sharon, just one quick question in terms of kind of the administration of the seventy-five thousand. I mean, maybe just a brief explanation of how that works. I mean, is it, do we release that money as, you know, bills are presented, invoices are presented for rehabbing? Or are there milestones that labyrinth has to reach that allow us then to release parts or all of that money? Just maybe a brief explanation of how that works.
Sure. Typically, what we do, well, I shouldn't say typically because each situation's a little bit different, but what we plan to do in this situation is to release the full seventy-five thousand dollars to labyrinth, getting my agencies mixed up, to labyrinth to oversee for a couple of reasons. Number one, that will let them have control of the money to pay the expenditures as they need to. That will give them our full fiscal year, basically, or twelve months. I would need to have it expended by April thirtieth, twenty fourteen, at the end of the fiscal year. What they provide back to me is receipts and a detailed list of all the expenditures and what they spent it on so that I have that for my file. We also have staff member go out and take periodic pictures. And of course, there's building permits and inspections that are done along the way as well. So, we'll keep in close contact with them.
So, we have, if you will, an audit trail?
Yes, absolutely. Have to for HUD.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sharon.
Stephen?
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the revised budget, the projects, the community development block grants. And I think it's a good, you know, selection of increases because, you know, the council wanted to see some more money put in other places around the city, like the rehab loans or demolition or administration's required, Boys and Girls Club. So, it is a good division of the block grants where other people are helped and other organizations and other outreaches are helped. So, I'm very supportive of this. I'm glad to see we were able to drop that other price down so some of the council members can, you know, get, get on board with the labyrinth. So, thank you very much for your hard work and all the organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. We do try and spread it out to affect the youth of the community, the seniors, household members, infrastructure, we do try and spread it out. And if it wasn't for all of your patience and good suggestions, Rob, for you taking the time to suggest that we look for alternative financiers and suggesting that we use existing properties instead of new, it wouldn't be possible. So, I think it is a good team effort for the project.
Also, the volunteer work that you get. Really nice to where you can get volunteers to help out with the projects and the fundraising.
Labyrinth has worked tirelessly with that.
That's a real good, you know, mix to where people are helping out and helping the community. Thank you.
Judy?
Just a couple of quick things. Yes, it has changed, you know, appreciably. And I do think that this is, has been very sensitive to things that we talked about before. So, you know, I think great, great changes from three hundred to seventy-five thousand, existing property, you know, renovations in the neighborhood, that, all of that is very much appreciated. I'm curious about the rehab grants that we give, you know, and wondering if there are still applications out there pending. Are we still, and if so, I'm wondering how many are there? Do you anticipate that the amount we have will be sufficient for the applications that you get? Any feel for where we're at with existing ones, new ones, all of that?
We have about fifteen applications on the waiting list right now. And as you recall, that kind of fits in, that's kind of typical. We've processed, I don't have the numbers here in front of me, but I think probably about twenty-five to thirty jobs this year already. We've about run out of our rehab funds for this fiscal year. I have a few funds left for demolition, so we're, we've got a few demo projects going on. And that's fairly typical. We spend anywhere from, say, two fifty to three fifty. That's two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand on rehab each year. It's kind of in that range. And the WB RP projects add in or contribute also to that housing rehab total, both with the tool lending library and the facade program. So, we're kind of in that same range.
Okay. And we're doing loans now, rather than, because we, I know we had done grants for a while, but now we're back to a loan program that can constantly refresh itself, you know, set right, sustain itself.
Yes. As you recall, we did go ahead and switch back over primarily to deferred loans. That requires no monthly payment, but does require a payoff when they are no longer the owner and occupant.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Just for clarification, the sidewalk replacement, that's the fifty-fifty grants that have been around for years, or is that complete replacement?
That's, yeah, that's a little bit different. We used to participate, CDBG did, in the fifty-fifty program where we would pick up the fifty percent share of the homeowner if they were income-qualified and the city would take the other half. Unfortunately, HUD looked at that as replacing sidewalks too much on a spot basis and they prefer to, for us to have more of an impact within a neighborhood or community and do longer runs of sidewalk, like a block or a half a block at a time in different areas. So, we stopped, I'm guessing probably about eight years ago, from participating in the fifty-fifty program. So, it's still the city pays half, but the homeowner is responsible for half. This is for complete replacement within our targeted low and moderate income areas.
Okay. Looking at the map, that area seems like it covers about a third of Bloomington, so...
That's probably a fair estimate.
How do you determine where you're going to spend those dollars at?
For the sidewalks?
Yeah.
That's actually determined by Public Works Department. Jeff Rains is a staff person there and maybe Jim Karch would like to answer further details on that. But I think they go out and take a look at the current condition of sidewalks and rate them similar to the streets and determine what is most critical to be replaced and then make sure that they're in our targeted area. Jim, did I address that correctly?
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
At this time, we can have more discussion later, but I would like to get a motion on the floor if someone's prepared to do so. Either...
I'll make a motion that we approve the, I'm going to get the language of it right, that we approve and authorize the Community Development Block Grant Program Action Plan. Did I get that right?
That'll do. Stephen?
I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay, continue discussion. Rob?
Yeah, I think there's one person in the audience who's spent a good amount of time on this and his name hasn't been mentioned yet, but I think there's a big thank you for Drake Zimmerman. He's added a lot of sophisticated financial analysis. Mary, when you did the operating budget, I imagine there was some help from Drake. He also identified the investor and without that, this wouldn't work. So, Drake, thanks for all your help.
If there's no further discussion, we do have a motion on the floor. I'd like to go ahead and do a vote on that. Again, the motion is to approve the budget and pass the resolution authorizing the filing of the grant. A yes vote will support that. So, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on that.
Alderman Freund?
Yes.
Alderman Mathie?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Mewalamwe?
Yes.
Alderman Sterns?
Aye.
Alderman McDay?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Purcell?
Yes.
Alderman Fazini?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes without dissent. Thank you very much to all the people that contributed their opinions today. And let's hope the federal government has the money.
Hope it stops.
They're in Washington, working on it.
Yeah, they're working on printing our money right now. With that, that brings us to the close of our agenda for today, but we would, well, let's do some being formally, David, I want, again, I want to formally have you state that you're withdrawing the item for now.
Definitely, yeah. We're, yeah, withdrew the Eagleview Park item for discussion and that's being deferred to this Saturday's Budget Works session, so we'll be taking that up.
Or later. This Saturday is going to be general and will contain other things, too, obviously.
It will. This will be, you know, one of those items.
Okay. Thank you. Since you're talking, why don't we go ahead with City Managers' discussion?
I just want to make sure someone does mention the upcoming Citizen Voice Meeting for this Wednesday, so hopefully someone will, unless you want me to.
Well, go ahead. You brought it up.
Okay. I think just, we want to make the public aware that this Wednesday, we will have a Citizen Voice Meeting. It's kind of a town hall type meeting where the council, rather than conduct business, listens to the citizens. And this particular Citizen Voice Meeting is, the topic is the City Manager's Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2014. So, as a insert in the utility bill and a press release indicated, the council is very interested to hear from the public about this proposed budget, the services provided by the city, your view of those, any suggestions, as goals, priorities, anything that this financial plan has a part to play, you know, in continuing to provide vital municipal services to the community and continuing to enhance quality of life. So, the budget has been out there on the website. We encourage you to go, and especially you could go to the City Managers' Budget Message. It has kind of a summary of that particular budget per se. So, please come to that meeting. It'll be at the Bloomington Center for Performing Arts, just up the road from six to seven thirty P.M. So, we look forward to having you. And then the council, just on Saturday, will not only begin discussion of what they heard, either in person or by email or by letter, as we have invited the community to respond however you would like. They'll take up the city's recommended budget. Of course, the council's role is ultimately to approve that budget, make any changes, additions, deletions of the budget. And that has to be done each year on or before the latter part of April. So, that's kind of what we're looking for in the way of public comments Wednesday night at the BCPA. I have no other items for tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you handled that well, so I won't have to mention that. I did want to mention something that was in the paper the last few days, and that was the Wertz Beverage situation. I guess I would like to say that we were aware that the city of Lexington was interested in recruiting Wertz, as we were. My particular position on it was that we not get into a bidding war with Lexington. After all, we're all in the same county. And I think that if we start bidding against each other, that's just going to run the tab up for the taxpayers in the county, giving incentives that go higher and higher. I did have an opportunity to, I had a phone call from Anthony Iaterola, one of the vice presidents, and I did basically say to him, welcome to McLean County. I believe that we're going to have the jobs here and I think many of those workers, even though Lexington is a great place, I think many of the workers will live here in the Bloomington, Normal area anyway. So, it's going to help our local economy. About the only thing I think maybe we might want to think about in the future is, do we get somebody more on the hook before we ask other governments to pass resolutions? And of course, that can be a chicken or the egg type thing. Before we commit, we want commitments from you as to what you're going to offer us and so on. But we probably need to work that out. But I am pleased that they are coming to McLean County and, as I said, I had the opportunity to welcome them here. So, that's really all I have. Jim?
Uh, just one quick observation. We read in the paper that the state of Illinois had, um, uh, granted Illinois State University a large, I don't know what it was, maybe fifty-eight million dollar, um, funding for their fine arts building. And it just made me think that with that excitement going on out there, and while it will take some time to construct, that seems to be even a greater university of choice for fine arts. And I'm just wondering if there's any way in the years ahead, I guess I kind of direct this to John a little bit, whether we can make some partnerships with them with regard to our BCPA, our Creativity Center, and what we offer culturally, uh, downtown. So, perhaps that's a ways off, but fifty-eight million dollars speaks well to the state's commitment to Illinois State to, uh, improve our arts education.
That's a nice, uh, one of the crowning achievements for Al before he leaves also. David?
Two quick comments. Wanted to acknowledge, um, David, the work that staff has done, made some changes to the staff backup reports, um, that create a linkage and line of sight for us, uh, for, for our strategic plan. Um, and kind of provides a context for, a, a higher level context and, and more of a direction or a sense as to why we're, we're acting on specific issues. And so, uh, appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge, and I don't think we, I, I, I don't believe we talked about this, um, two weeks ago, but i- if we did, somebody will, will certainly correct me, and that is the, the donation from, uh, the Illinois Farm Bureau and Growmark and Country Financial, the hundred thousand dollar donation to our zoo. That is a, a remarkable contribution, um, an investment from, uh, from longtime, um, you know, partners here in the community. Um, and, and wanted to make a point, too, that, that this was something I didn't know when I first came on the council, but something I've obviously learned. This is the value of why we, we develop, uh, a number of, of these strategic plans, whether it's the zoo or, or anything else. It doesn't mean that we're going to rush out and spend sixteen million dollars on a, on a, on a new zoo. What it means is we have to have that structure. We have to have oftentimes that plan, that document in place so that community groups and other organizations can come and they have, they have a, a nice line of sight as to what they're investing in, what they're contributing for. And, and that, that simple reality, I think, is, is, is lost a lot of times in, in, in kind of the, the process of that happening. But, but I would suggest if we didn't, if we had not had that, that zoo master plan in place that, I might add, was paid for by the Zoological Society, not by the city, that we wouldn't have created a, a, a channel or an opportunity or an avenue for, uh, again, the Illinois Farm Bureau, Growmark, and Country Financial to come and make that contribution to our zoo. So, again, I thought it was a remarkable contribution and, and worth, uh, worth acknowledging.
Good point. Thank you for raising that. And you're right, you can't set out on a journey without some idea of a destination. Jamie?
Mayor, after last week when we were talking about, uh, Lutz Road, I was, I'm not familiar, I wasn't familiar with that area of town, so I went and drove it over the weekend and drove around it a couple times. And then I, I also spent some time looking at some aerial maps of the area. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm a computer guy, so I went to Google Maps. And I guess I, uh, so I'm from the country, and that's a pretty good country road, but that seems like a, a road that probably should have been addressed when we had a fairly large development going in down there. Um, I guess I had a couple, uh, suggestions or questions maybe at a future meeting that we could have some more information on how we ended up with a large development on such a small road, you know, just looking at it. Somebody had to have known that there was going to be an issue with the traffic down there. Um, and then, you know, I, it's probably been talked about before, but what are we doing to make sure we don't get in, in the situation where now there's a development that the city is on the hook to fix the road? Maybe that should have been done ahead of time when it was being built.
Okay. Um, I think that'd be a good topic either here or, uh, discussion with the city manager, going back and looking at that, that document. The, um, the, um, uh, church home out there, so, and of course, it's getting ready to expand. Also, I don't, I'm, um, I don't want to go into the details, but, uh, and it's been there, what, five years, maybe? Six years at most? So, it is relatively new. Rob?
On the Wertz situation, it, it isn't just that we're going to have some of the employees from Bloomington Normal, uh, having jobs and going to Lexington. Uh, almost half of the people who shop at the shops at College Hills come from outside of Bloomington Normal. So, this will be that many more people, uh, coming from outside of Bloomington Normal helping our shopping malls. Also, we have the Coliseum, the BCPA, the zoo, the Children's Museum, the History Museum, Heartland Community College will get more students, the Corn Belters. Uh, these are all organizations that are going to benefit in addition. So, it's, it, it isn't just that we're being magnanimous and saying, "Oh, it's nice that they're in McLean County." It really is going to help the city and the town and the county in, in many ways. So, just want to point that out.
You assumed I was just being magnanimous?
Yes.
No, it, it really is good news to see it, uh, in the county as opposed to, you know, eighty or a hundred miles away. Mboke?
Uh, just briefly, I, um, I wanted to congratulate David and the staff, particularly Justine, for, uh, great work on the economic development. I took a drive out to, uh, Lake Wood Plaza, uh, over by the old cage, uh, and it's, it's an area that I visit very often. And, uh, the level of activity is incredible. I mean, the whole parking lot is filled, and this is something that I, I haven't seen, I don't know, maybe in six or seven years. Uh, so, congratulations. And I think we're making very good progress there.
And we are in some other places, too. The, um, furniture store over in Colonial Plaza.
Ashley.
Ashley Furniture.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that's still moving ahead. So, and there is still a vacant space or two there that we're, I know we're working on. Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.